For all the things here, I pray that you have been blessed upon each and every one day since I came here. Oh God, thank you, in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since Council meeting, the city making now called the order, by the presence of all workers, the council's going through. Then acute, yes, I demand the agenda, approve of the agenda.
So moved.
The proper motion and second, the questions. As heard now, all the things we took up in our, opposed, may, motion carried. Item number five, approve of bills, approve of list of twenty-six dollars, fifteen more dollars and forty-two cents. That's out. Shall I take the motion? The proper motion and second, all the things we indicate by saying aye, opposed, may, motion carried. All right, let's look at minutes from our last work, let's schedule. Yeah, changes.
So moved.
Second. All right, the proper motion and second, the questions, all the things we indicate by saying aye, opposed, may, motion carried. That's how many gentlemen report from the mayor. Well, you know what, I've rehearsed this scenario probably a thousand times in my mind. How do you say goodbye? How do you, uh, say goodbye to twenty-one units of service? Twenty-one units, a long time. Uh, I do know one thing, that God doesn't make mistakes. And I know there is always, there's something better. And something better's already shown up in, in terms of me concentrating on my business, and my radio station, and the other business interests that I have, so, for that, I'm grateful. But I'm also grateful to have an opportunity to work with this council. Uh, we've all, have worked together, the majority of us, for, uh, Terry, Janice, and them, twenty years. I'd say we had twenty and a half years of good relationship, the other half was campaigning. So, uh, with that being said, and I just want to say that, and Terry, if you ever need anything, or you have any questions or anything, you're always, my door is open, you're always to reach out, my phone, I will answer it, all right? And, uh, the other calls I get, I'm just gonna shoot them to you. Uh, I, I am so grateful, and I'm so honored and privileged to have served the city as its first black mayor, as the longest-serving mayor in the history of the city, and having served five consecutive terms. So for that, I am truly grateful and honored to have done so. Uh, we leave here with a lot of good things that are happening in the city, I look back. Uh, my mark has been on this city, it's all over the city, from the building of the health center, the building of the High Warline Trail, uh, fingerprints all over that, uh, that High Warline Trail has been featured as one of the most decorated, honored trails in, in Alabama. It shows up every time, you go to the Alabama League of Municipalities, when they talk about trails and rails, they show the High Warline Trail here in Midfield, uh, in the statewide news. Uh, and just so many other things, from, uh, Walkin Tribe, near Wendy's, location, by the way, the Asian restaurants coming to the occasion. So, so let you know, we also leave here with new businesses coming along, new supermarkets, and I believe in the city in pretty great shape. And, uh, I'm very supportive of the next mayor and the next council as we move forward to a new era. With that, let me, uh, now, let's move on to... Chief Bill.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I want to share with everybody, we've seen all the job we have done, I did it for a whole twenty-one years. So I do know what it was like when I first got in, who's in charge, and who's running it, and, you know, that's one thing I can say, coming from a neighborhood city, over here. And seeing the shape of the neighborhood city now, how it feels, it was definitely been managed, managed right, and I thought we had the council get, get an excellent job. Uh, on October fifteenth, we had an accidental shooting up on Twelve Street, we had a twenty-three-year-old male accidentally shoot his twenty-one-year-old brother, who passed away that night. Uh, we've investigated, we'll be presenting our findings to the D.O.A. after we all anticipate any charges related to it. So that's the child, people, the family, and the young man that accidentally killed his brother in the crowd. Uh, we also got a new hire, a female police officer, already certified, we started next week. I confirmed with her, uh, today, so she'll be starting middle part next week. Uh, in November, our dispatches will be attending, uh, EMD certification training, so that's a four-hour training course. Uh, and all dispatches I have, and also, on Friday, will be participating in the trumpet, trumpet treat with the elementary school. That's all I have.
Thank you, all right, thank you. Chief, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, one house fire, uh, Saturday, next Saturday, October the eighteenth, one house fire, resulting food on the stove, person was cooking. Uh, no injuries, no fatalities, a person did have a working smoke detector in the house, so, thankfully, taking with the person up, they escaped the fire, so, also, Mayor Richardson, I'd like to tell you, thank you for allowing me to run the fire department on your watch, you've done paid your work. You're not a shame.
Important. Hey, I'm not going anywhere, uh, first off, the, uh, I do want to say that, uh, my colleagues in the Justin Kelly Mayor's Association, uh, named me to an advisory committee of the Justin Kelly Mayor's. Uh, one is that they don't want to lose some institutional knowledge of the organization and the historical nature, because we lost so many of them. Uh, seemed like we lost half the mayors in Justin Kelly's last election, so it's gonna be a new one, but they put me on advisory panel, and that, uh, I'm grateful, and I get to serve on some other boards and agencies, the Red Mountain, uh, Green, the Justin Kelly Greenway Commission, which I'm still commissioning, and, uh, and also, Regional Plant Commission, where the government, I was appointed to a four-year term, so, that term, it's not expired, so, I'm not going anywhere, I, and none of that, I'm still on the radio, and, uh, in fact, my radio program is the most supported, radio program, rail.com. I mean, supported, my radio station reaches hundreds of thousands of folks on a daily basis, so, I'm good. I'm good. All right, let's start with popular recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, one thing I need to announce is in a couple of weeks, we're gonna start a new class at the community center, which is gonna be chair exercise and line dancing, so, um...
Okay. Any questions, Adama? All right, thank you. Moses Hill, City Inspector.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor's been a good ride, so, thank God for the opportunity to work with you these years, obviously, at least of all the, uh, departments here, I think we may not always be able to post it. We have two years next month, so, been a good ride. Our, uh, report for this, uh, council meeting, uh, inspection, we did twenty-two stop work orders, we did four, uh, we sold seven building permits, two electrical permits, two plumbing permits, and one mechanical permit. Uh, also, we have started on doing a ride-out, uh, to start identifying abandoned houses again, we're gonna start that back up, the forty years out, I wanna try to get that done again, so we can, uh, identify, uh, all the abandoned houses here in Midfield. That's all I have.
Questions? All right, thank you, Michael Lloyd.
Good evening. Well, finally got those trees down at the library, so, uh, yeah, so, my next project will be painting, and, uh, overpainting up here also, so, uh, Mayor, it's been a pleasure working on these also, my twenty-five years, and I appreciate everything, done for...
Thank you. That's all right. All right. Uh, I see Orlando Robinson, you, you got a good thing to say for the neighborhood association, or, one of the many hats that you wear?
I know, right? Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I would like to say, congratulations to Mayor Richardson on your new endeavors. Thank you for your service to the city, uh, over the many years, uh, some may or may not know this, before Mr. Gary Richardson was the mayor, he was the neighborhood president! So, uh, so thank you for all that you have done, and congratulations to Mayor-elect Terry Adams, and, uh, to, also to our new city council persons, and one who's coming back to city council. I don't see him right now, but, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. So, but, but congratulations, we look forward, uh, to working with everyone. Uh, as Mr. Lloyd said, we are excited about, uh, the renovations that we are making at the library. Uh, trees have been chopped down in front of the library, uh, we painted on the inside, just last week, the carpet was clean, today, the flooring was waxed, uh, and thank you to Ms. Williams, uh, who was able to help us get a donation of a brand-new, really nice state-of-the-art microwave, I mean, it's like crazy. Almost the size of an oven, but, uh, but thank you to that, and we have more changes that are to come. We were looking to, uh, have, uh, an open house in the next couple of weeks. I am going to be premature and announce that we're gonna have to push that back a couple of weeks, because we're getting new technology, we're gonna be painting the outside of the building, there's so much. The, the library is going to look amazing when you all see it, so we want to make sure that everyone is pleased when we see, uh, the library in the upcoming weeks, so, uh, one of our board members is here, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm prematurely announcing that it will be penciled in for the early part of December. Also, uh, we are in need of a couple of more board members, uh, Mrs. Deontay Jones is one of our board members, but she will be sworn in as a new city council person on next week, so her seat will be vacated, and we have another seat, but we do have someone who worked with the board back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, who has expressed his interest in returning, so, there's some great things that are happening, we're excited, and again, thank you all so much, thank you for your support with everything that we've been doing here in the city of Midfield. God bless Midfield.
Thank you. All right. Now, we move to the next item of the agenda, report from the council.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna go into it right now, we'll get into it later. Uh, this is a program we're doing with the, um, properties that we got, to help, uh, homeowners get, uh, no down payment, no closing costs, uh, no points and fees, no mortgage insurance, there's a lot of, we, uh, they're coming into Midfield, uh, just getting everybody ready, so just pick this up and we'll expose it there. Also, uh, the swearing-in for the new council, uh, Council meeting, my number three, is at the Old Adams West Building, probably the New York Building, because the next council is gonna change the name of that building, 'cause Old Adams West is a collab, we gotta be, any more angry things for that, so we're gonna change the name of it, but I'm just giving the name of the New York Building right now. I feel, uh, I was fortunate to go to Pezzet Road to their council meeting, they received me very well, I see their attorney, J.D. Terrence back here, came in to give us a space, so, uh, I do want to thank him. Last of all, twenty-one years, let me say this right now, Gary Richardson has been a mentor to me. If y'all really pay attention, y'all knows a lot of things that he's said to do, I don't care. Because we had plenty of meetings, plenty of things together, he told me jokes that I would tell other people, jokes that I can't tell nobody else, but we have had great twenty-one years. Not the hand that led me was scattered free between each other. Gary Richardson is my friend. He is my friend, regardless of many people, that many people have seen this, he's a friend of mine, he was always a friend of mine. He has helped me, I did a radio show with many of my hours, if you listen to that radio show, I gave you praise for what you have done in my life. You have lifted me from where I was to where I am now. Sometimes it take people to do that, to make you the person that you are, and I'm not the person that's not gonna tell them, thank you, because he has given, he has shown, he has took a pen and a paper, he's grabbed me like, "How's your child?" one time, "Look, this is what it is." And I learned, and I learned, and I hope to keep going on, he's the first black mayor in Midfield, Alabama, but remember this, this council will do something for this great man. We all have to be together to decide, I can't make a decision alone, it's a council decision, so we will do something in the coming months, this man because he deserved it.
Amen.
He deserves it. When we came in, we did something for the, one of the mayors of the, uh, the mayor's of the left, council member, uh, the one who passed, uh, this name, didn't shoot up in the... McWhorter, number, the council, council member, um...
Lester. He's a... Buddy Casey.
Yeah, and, uh, yeah, and, uh, yeah.
Edgar, oh.
Well, the council has to get a lot of stuff, but the council has to come together and do this, it's not, it's not, it's us. And I'm sure they want to do something for this man for what he has done for the city of Midfield, so don't think because you're leaving the day after then, it's not gonna be like this one. Thank you. One more thing, Chief. Mayor, I think, um, council members, if you come forward with this right here, this is well-deserved. Well-deserved, would everybody please come forward, please? What it is? I think you gotta laugh, because you're wearing some gear, Rich.
You know, earlier, I was thanking all the councilmen, uh, really, you like, you had just got here, so I didn't mention your name, with these old towners here, you...
That's quite all right.
You come up, like, and work here.
That's quite all right.
That ain't your work, but you...
That one come in, like, all of a sudden, upside.
You know? I would read this, but you know, who does all the reading, councilman?
Thank you, presented to Mayor Gary Richardson, in recognition of him as the first black mayor in over twenty years of committed and dedication of service, commit, and dedication of service to the city of Midfield. Wishing you, uh, the best in all your future endeavors, City of Midfield, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Thank you.
Can I get everybody up?
Thank you.
Mayor, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You know, I, I see a couple former councilmembers that I have ten, who work with, Councilman Jimmy Robinson, who have four, from the community association, uh, thank you, sir, thank you for your service. Reginald Wilson, uh, serves. Eight years ago? Four. Four?
No, he didn't.
Yeah, thank you so much, all right, uh, Councilman, Mayor.
Me. I, I... Uh, I did attend the opening of Little Caesar Pizza on Saturday, it was well-attended, um, they gave away, uh, to the Midfield Elementary School, free pizza for a year, I thought that was excellent, so, and they had represented from the, uh, elementary school that was there, uh, they also gave to the first people, free pizza for a year. So they, uh, are willing to work with the community, to the schools and all that, so they are, uh, it was well-represented by the community, they kind of, they came out on Saturday. Um, I also will be, uh, they've asked me to do a trumpet treat, say, uh, Friday at the elementary school, so, we'll be trumpet treating at the elementary school on Saturday, I think they have three hundred and sixty-seven kids.
Friday's Friday.
Friday, next Friday, this coming Friday, yeah, three hundred and sixty-seven kids, so I'm excited, the trumpet treatment at the elementary school on Friday, and Mayor, it's been my pleasure to work with you. Uh, we are pro team, we work together well, um, discussed a lot of things, and did a lot of things, and made sure our financial initiative was intact, and I appreciate, you know, your input on everything that we did, and the conversations that we had. Um, I'm just honored to have that privilege to have worked with you for twenty-one years, and thank you for your friendship.
And for the many years you were finance chair, we, uh, we never, uh, interviewed in a deficit, we never had to let off workers, we always made payroll. Uh, so, you know, a lot of things we sort of take for granted, uh, here, uh, we look at neighboring cities and where they've struggled to make things meet, and, so, we never denied marriage increases for our employees. Uh, the Midfield is being looked in great shape. Thank you, and it's just because of the team effort, not just one individual, it's always a team effort. I always say, nothing happens without a vote. Nothing happens without a vote, all right? So if anything got done, it took a vote to get it done, and it took a majority of votes to get it done, so, uh, I don't say that I did everything on my own, because nothing happens without a vote. Thank you. Councilman Mayor, whether? Thank you.
Of course, I just want to say that, anything that goes on in the city, I just want to make sure that the council, make sure that everybody is prepared of what's going on. I don't like it when residents or employees or elected officials ask me questions about what's going on in the city, and I don't have an answer. So if one council person knows, I would ask that you please disseminate the information along with the rest of the council. Now, that was the first part, the second part, Mayor, it has been an absolute privilege, working alongside of you, I have learned so much, and the information that you have gave me is invaluable, and it has been a privilege working above you.
Thank you.
And Terry, I look forward to us working together, and working together in a cohesive manner, because our house is stronger when we're cohesively, you know, intact. It's not gonna do us any good for us to be separated, or for us to be disjointed, because we don't want to be like some of the other neighboring municipalities, because we can be strong, you know, the future looks bright, I'm excited, you know, the residents have spoken, and I accept what the residents have spoken, because everybody is sitting here, and the new people, the residents voted, you know, for us, the residents voted that, Mayor, you did a good too much, and we'll see you later. And I, I wish you way up in...
Thank you, thank you so much, all right, thank you.
Uh, I would like to inform everyone that, uh, the community guard, which is really doing a wonderful job, they just, uh, received a big recognition from the Botanic Guard. You would, you wouldn't believe how much work it, it takes to run that guard. Ms. Leonard, uh, I want to give a shout-out to her, for I was there and participated, I just want you guys to know that she has received a big plaque for, has, you'll see a whole community guard, uh, recognition. I also will be participating in the trumpet treat at the elementary school also on Friday, and I would also, I'm, I was the last one, but I would also like to thank the mayor, I've learned a lot from you, I mean, most of the time, I've done the right thing, sometimes you've got no purpose for doing something wrong, but I've always learned from my mistakes, being a stranger, and a honor, working with you. And I wish you the best in everything that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we've heard from the council, we open the meeting to the folks, we have to, wish you a dress this body, for length, the comments in three minutes, we start with Larry Mayor, whether, three oh eight, eleven thousand five hundred.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Well, I, uh, appreciate your service for twenty-one years, that's been a lot, and I appreciate you, uh, calling me up, you know, encouraging me to be on the school board, you know, and then when it's time for me to be a real, real appointed, I didn't have to think about what we was going, you know, you was straight up, I could deal with a person straight up, you let me know what we was holding, what we, how you feel about, and stuff, that's been a lot. And we all is different, we all, we do different things, go to different church, got different careers, and everything, but in life, we got to learn to put our differences aside, and pull together. Terry, I'll be here for you, whatever you need, mighty wise, if I got it, you know, just call me, you know, you know, I would have a good communication, whatever that is, agree or disagree, you know, keep going, that's what your man do, you know, you're not gonna agree on everything, but we'll agree to disagree, and move forward, that's what we do, because, Terry, he gonna be the leader, if he falls, all of us. So, when they say Midfield, I also part of Midfield, you know, I've been in Midfield until nineteen eighty-four, yeah, so, so we want, we want to continue, you, you did a great job, you know, so you don't have to worry your works deeply.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Jimmy Robinson, twelve twenty toward Gil drive.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, you come forward, I want to do a presentation, sir.
Sir, it has been an honor to work with you, returning our, your leadership.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I will keep, as a matter of fact, the Robinson family of the great city of Midfield, I can present you this plaque.
That's clear, is it, Jen? Thank you, sir, two thousand and four to two thousand and twenty-five, thank you.
Yes, sir, I want to be also a trooper.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Mayor Hudson, twenty oh thirty-two, where you build drive? To Mayor Richardson and the council, Mayor Rich, I won't go back, maybe further back than twenty-four, when we saw all the tracks, so, get everything together, I think it's back in twenty sixteen, thank you. Then I know from Midfield votes we eat to neighborhood, uh, association, job where I got it.
Thank you.
And also, it doesn't take you, I'll thank your family also, because they have been forceful plenty also, and it's been a good journey, and I don't know the words to this song, uh, who I, it's so hard to say goodbye. Right, and it goes along, right, it, it has been a long ride, and I remember other councilors who was proud too, that election, right, but we learned some things.
But you know, God, God doesn't make mistakes.
Right.
And he checked me because I wasn't checking myself.
Yeah.
In, in two days after qualifying, I had open-heart surgery, and he put me right in my track.
Yeah.
It was just, he was saying to me, "Hey, man, you need to slow down, you need to slow down, and you're doing too much." And, you know, for, for a long time, Mayor, I had three careers going... And, you know, for, for a long time, Mayor had three careers going at the same time. Being an educator, being a mayor, being a radio station owner, you know, that type of stuff, lead to stress. Stress leads to health issues. So, thank to the God that we were able to catch that. So it was more important that I lived than win another election.
It's been a fun ride, and we seen the ups and the downs.
Yes.
Like they start on the side, so now you're next.
Thanks. Hey, I, I'm gonna enjoy it. Absolutely, thank you so much. Reginald Wilson, Dr. Muth, Gil Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I also want to thank you for the service. So we are more alike than not.
Yes.
I want to say this right here, in two thousand and nineteen, I lost my father to a company that was awesome. And after the autopsy, it developed that he had prostate cancer. And like I said, God gonna make no mistakes. The day of the election, there, I talked extensively about his proceeds in more prevention.
Right.
And it, it really helped me a lot and opened my eyes to a lot of things. I keep a standing appointment with my doctor on, in July, the last Fri- Monday in July, and the last Monday in January. Well, this is January, but tell them about, I need to take that, yeah, so I appreciate that. And I don't know if you guys been seeing a sign talking about Black Men Wellness Tour. Black men, if you guys got time for that day, it's November the fifteenth, please attend this. It's at Railroad Park, I hope you be there. Like I said, every time we see each other, we need to say, are you all right, taking care of yourself? I used to see you walking a lot, you need to start packing, you're not going. God, we all, we all need to get exercise, just help take care of one another. Because like I said, we have a lot more in common than not. So we gonna have disagreement, we gonna have ups and downs, but working together is gonna always stand. So, appreciate you.
Thank you.
And you gonna be around, so no worries.
Nathan Williams, five forty, Loveland.
I'd like to say good evening to everyone. Mayor's been an honor, having you as a mayor for the city, and one of these left out, the school board. You, the council got together to help us out, that raggedy road down there to the, to the school. Because without the school, the council, and I and O, we never would have had my mind to do that. So we want to thank you for that. Mr. Adams, welcome you with open arms, you know, anything you need, this is better trend, if I've been with Mayor Richardson, I will be with you. And to the citizens. Everybody voted and has spoken who is to be what. So, let's, as a city, accept Mr. Adams as our mayor. Because we're already living in, living in a divided nation, and we're a small city here. So whether you voted or not, when the vote has been counted and you a member, is our mayor. So we should remember that, we stick together, as long as it's our mayor, then we can work together. Well, Adams, welcome you, salute to you, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. The one that said the sound of Chertie and Moser.
Well, before we do that, okay. Mayor, in your honor, we're gonna have this reception for you at the university center.
Really?
So it's a kind of fellowship with everybody to stay, and we do that, so everybody, you know, we want to, you know, say to fellowship with the mayor, um, and.
How do I know about this?
No.